Thank you all. As you're aware, we had lots of discussions about the planned residential community ordinance. And here tonight, we are here to then respond to some of the work that's been done between county planning staff and the RCA, RA, and CPR, rest and group staff that have been working on this problem. In doing this tonight, we are working toward some agreement in terms of understanding the comprehensive plans, that is, the elements that are supported in the comprehensive plan. And so we know that this group has met with planning staff, and we've met on several occasions, and we've gotten to the point, and I think it's a great point, in looking at what are the tools that support the comprehensive plan, which is very much important. And we have tonight here, planning staff, that have been participating in this meeting. And we will begin tonight, starting a series of meetings to look at each of those elements. We talked about parks, recreation, schools, transportation, environmental spaces, and all of those. And so I'm gonna just turn it over to Larry, and you'll begin with your meeting. I want to say before I leave that, in doing this, I hope that because it's being viewed, we'll get a wider understanding of what you are looking for and what you will take away from these meetings in looking at these elements in the comprehensive plan that are part of the essentials that support our development, our community. So it's an opportunity not only for you to have a discussion and learn more about it, and for staff to first review, but it's also an opportunity for the larger community to participate. The important part is that there will be additional meetings, and so we would hope that everyone will have the opportunity to see from their own environments, they will also participate in the rest of your meetings as well. And with that, I want to thank you for the time that you put in in meeting with both staff and all of your discussions back and forth, and hope that this will be productive after. Thank you very much.
Thanks, man. Good evening, everybody. I'm Larry Valdman, CDO for Reston Association, and I just wanted to put a whole kind of ground rules and so forth. We are being taped tonight, so I just ask those people, particularly at the table here, to speak up so they can be captured. And we hope to have this aired, and we'll send a link out Friday. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I appreciate Supervisor Hudgens and county staff who are spending additional time, as well as our residents, coming out tonight to join in this discussion, which is the first, as Scotty said, of four. We've got another one tomorrow night in the same spot, Parks, Recreation, and Open Space. It's one of the 24th on schools and infrastructure, and the 30th. And those second two are the last two, I should say, are Reston Association Open R Conference, and that last one was on planning, village centers, and so forth. So tonight is really gonna be a discussion at those at the table here. If you want to make comments, we will have a comment section at the end, and we appreciate if those comments are specific to what's being discussed tonight. So listen intently. If you have questions about what's being said at the table and discussed, please focus your questions on that. Our goal is to get out of here at eight o'clock. A lot of us in this room go to a lot of meetings, and so we appreciate a good start. We started right at six, and a good end. Hope right at eight. And again, we ask you to have those comments towards the end of the meeting, and we hope we have a robust discussion. I'm thanking everybody for coming out.
Okay. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for your engagement in the process, and thanks to the audience for being here as well. Just to kind of set the stage for tonight, I wanted to go back and do just a very high level overview. We do have a document that we've worked on called the Reston Transportation Strategy Document, which was distributed last week. I'm not gonna go through that word for word, but I do want to hit some of the high points just to kind of set the stage of where we came from, came at this from the transportation perspective.
Before you go on, can everybody hear it?
No. No, kids have a little bit off.
So Larry, did you want to do an introduction before we got started?
Yeah, that's no bad idea. Yeah. So I introduce myself, I'm Larry Valdman of the Reston Association.
And I'm Tom DeShaw. I'm the Director of Fairfax County's Department of Transportation.
My name's Greg Stevenson. I run the Site Analysis and Transportation Planning Division at FCDOT.
I'm Jeff Herman. I'm the Section Chief for Site Analysis at FCDOT.
I'm Kelsey Steffen, and the Reston Association Executive Planner.
Shlider Guedes, Vice President, Reston Association Board of Directors.
John Mooney, Reston Association Board of Directors, and his secretary.
Tammy Patraine, CPR and Reston 2020.
And Sean Seif, on Reston, Assistant Association, and a number of other things. One person. But I'm the President of the Reston Association.
All right. So, you know, the first thing is, the comprehensive plan that we're talking about was developed over a four-year period of time, along with a committee that was established by Supervisor Hudgens, and with a significant amount of community engagement that occurred along the way. As that plan was being developed, we were also developing a transportation plan to support the comprehensive plan amendment that increased densities primarily or almost exclusively in the Reston Transit Station areas, which are the areas around the three new metro rail stations. So that transportation plan was designed specifically for that conplan amendment. It wasn't something we pulled off the shelf. It wasn't projects we already had in the works. We designed it specifically for that plan, and we did a series of modeling effort, which VDOT calls an 870 effort, it's a specific reference to the code, that was designed to show that the transportation network in the future will support the additional development that was being planned as part of the comprehensive plan amendment. VDOT reviewed that document, and ultimately VDOT signed off on that document that said, yes, we believe that it's adequate to support the level of development that you are proposing to implement in Reston. And so that transportation plan was really a multimodal plan. It includes three new crossings of the Dulles Toll Road, new interchanges, new road segments that don't exist today, new intersection improvements, some widens, 30 new traffic signals in Reston, and a grid of streets which supports the entire development. So that's on the roadway side. On the transit side, we have a new metro rail extension that is providing those three new stations and providing a significant amount of additional capability in Reston. We added additional bus service with Phase One, that's a $4 million a year in additional service. That service will be reoriented as part of Phase Two. In addition to that, we've added one parking garage. We have another one coming online at Hernan Row, and then a third one coming at Innovation Center to provide access to the metro. In addition to that, there was a substantial effort with the community that went on called the Metro, Reston Metro Access Group, or R-MAG, that identified a whole host of improvements that needed to be made at the intersections, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, missing links, and new connections. So those recommendations are moving forward. In addition to that, we're great separating the W-1B trail and Lee Avenue to try and remove some of the friction that's occurring there. New bike lanes are being implemented throughout Reston, and there's a bike room at two of the three new stations, as well as bike share. So all of that works together. It's not done in isolation. It was done as part of the plan to support the new development. But in addition to that, there is other things that also support the plan. So one of the things that was integral with the plan was to add residential near the transit station areas. And that is really key, because prior to this whole discussion of the conplan, essentially you couldn't build residential between Sunset Hills and Sunrise Valley. So that change that the Reston Association made and then ultimately got incorporated in the conplan is integral to reducing future trips on the network. In addition to that, new development is required to achieve at least a 30% reduction in general trip rates, the single occupancy vehicle trip rates, for the new development. That is a significant reduction. In some cases, they have to go higher than that, up to 45% reduction. So that's part of the picture as well. Those TDM strategies are things that, and the analysis, were further studied on a two-year effort as part of the Reston Network Analysis. Those meetings were also public meetings, and Hank and others were there for most or many of those meetings. And so we refined it further. We said, what are those intersections? What do they really need to be? Where do we really need interchanges? How many lanes do we have on the roadway? So we spent considerable amount of time looking at that. And then we developed a funding plan to support it. So not only did we say, this is a great planning effort, here's what you need to do, but we developed a funding plan to provide those improvements. And that adds about 10 different funding sources to support it, including some that are Reston's assistance, so that Reston isn't having to compete against other areas of the county for every last dollar of that funding. So given the input from FCDOT, our state and regional partners, we are now working to implement the transportation plan. A number of the R-MAG, most of the R-MAG Phase One recommendations are already in place. There is additional work going on with intersections and interchanges. We're working, obviously, in the Silver Line. So the implementation process has really begun to implement the new transportation improvements. We do think, and we agree with you, that monitoring is going to be very key to this. The way things are today in 2018 is not going to be what they're like in 2038 or 2058. You're gonna have to continue to monitor this, not only to see how the development occurs, but also the transportation as well. And so that monitoring piece was integral to our recommendations for the plan. It's something that you have said that you support. I think the key will be to kind of decide what things do we want to monitor. We have some ideas, but we understand that you probably do as well. And so that's something we'll need to talk about. But I guess, to summarize, we believe we have developed a robust multimodal plan to support the new development that is part of that comprehensive plan amendment. There has been significant community engagement, and will continue to be. Every one of our projects, we go out and engage the community as we're implementing those, so we can get feedback on those. We will continue to be engaged with the community as we go through the implementation phase. And we are committed to making this work, and we believe that we have the tools to make both the development and the transportation work together for a successful investment. So with that, I would turn it over to you, Larry, and I want to start going through some of the items.
Okay. Yeah, so we submitted a summary of CPR and RA concern, which I think you all have. And so what we would like to do is just kind of go through the concerns, last questions, let the dialogue commence on those.
You want to summarize the three levels of concerns?
The, so, yes, before we get started, the first one looks at the accuracy of traffic projections, so that's the first thing we'll talk about. The second one is the planning, funding, and delivery of adequate transportation facilities in Reston. And the third is an effective mechanism for monitoring, evaluating, and adjusting the comprehensive plan in coordination with the actualized development. The communist reference monitoring, we certainly agree with you there, and we'll want to talk more about that at some point. So I guess with that, John, I'll turn you to discuss point number one.
And I wrote this out so I can, and usually when we meet with the folks from Fairfax, I've written it out so I can be briefer. And the style would be different than when we usually sit down and talk with these guys, because we also, I feel the need to add some context for those who have not been part of those discussions, so. So my personal task tonight is to summarize Reston's first transportation concern, the accuracy of the traffic projections presented by county's PRC proposal, or actually assumed by that proposal. And this step of the accuracy of traffic projections is foundational for the subsequent steps in our discussion tonight. So if the development projections are significantly off, the planned transportation facilities are doomed to inadequacy. So for now, I'll note just three primary concerns about the county's traffic forecast. First, the underlying count of the types and numbers of development units in the TSA areas. Secondly, the assumed reductions in vehicular trips. And thirdly, failure to do traffic modeling on traffic impacts on the rest of Reston outside the transit station area. So traffic forecasts are ultimately based on accurate count of types and numbers of development units in an area now and in the future. So, for example, how many residential units? How much retail space? How much office space? Because it's the people who live and work in the area who account for all of the origination and destination of the traffic associated with that area. And we have some serious concerns that the county may have significantly undercounted the number of development units for the following three reasons. And I believe Kelsey has handed out a slip which gives you a link to the county's website where you can read the more detailed and thorough discussion of these things. First of all, we're concerned that the county may have undercounted the number of office workers per square foot in office space by as much as 58%. Secondly, we're concerned that we do not, that the county in its documents does not count workforce and affordable housing units when calculating the total allowable residential density. This could undercount the total number of residential units in the TSA and non-TSA portions of Reston combined by as much as 40,000 units. And thirdly, in its impact analysis in the Reston Master Plan on Page 102, the county assumes that only 80% of the legally permitted development will actually occur. That potentially undercounts total new development by 20%. So that's our first concern about undercounting the number of development units. And secondly, we're concerned about the assumed trip reductions. So when you're doing traffic forecasting, after projecting the types and numbers of development units, traffic engineers then multiply those results by trip generation rates developed by the Institute for Traffic Engineers. So for example, they might say, a single-family home generates four trips a day. However, because all transportation planners know that the ITE rates are flawed, they then apply what are called trip reductions to rates, to those ITE-based reductions. And that's normal and expected. It would be irresponsible not to do it. It's the amount of those reductions that needs to be attended by good evidence. And in its recently published Reston Network Analysis Final Report, Fairfax gave only a very general defense of the rather ambitious reductions it claims for TSA areas. At full development in 2015, the county expects reductions ranging from 45% to 25%, depending on the type of unit, office or residential, and the distance from a metro station. The county claims an additional 7.5% reduction because of expected technology-based roadway efficiencies, like better signalization, or the use, growing use of automated or semi-automated vehicles. The cumulative trip reductions claimed by the county range from, therefore, from 52.5% to 32.5% of what the ITE projections would have been. Again, that's based on development type and distance from the metro. So we have four concerns with this, with these reductions that are planned. First of all, the actual reduction counts that the county has shared thus far are very fragmentary. Secondly, those same counts are much higher than similar office and residential counts cited in two very detailed studies recently of trip reductions in Arlington County, which has a much longer and more vigorous culture promoting alternatives to single occupancy vehicles. Thirdly, the county defended its high trip reduction rates by saying that the Virginia Department of Transportation approved it. It is both the county's long memorandum requesting the rate approval and VDOT's approval letter have the exact same date. Now, while some collaboration is to be expected, this simultaneity of request and approval makes us concerned about the full independence of the review. Fourthly, the additional 7.5% for technology-based efficiencies is, in my view, very speculative for reasons detailed in RA's longer transportation memo. When I discussed these technology-based efficiencies last week with Ronald Maloney, the Travel Forecasting Program Director at Metro Public and Washington Council Governments, he laughed and then said, Ernest, no one can predict these efficiencies. The third area of concern about the transportation projections are projections that didn't have any. The county did not, so far as I can tell, model the impact of traffic generated by the transit station areas on most areas of Reston outside those transit station areas. The county's Reston Network Analysis Final Report focuses narrowly on traffic impacts in the traffic station areas themselves, and on sections, and I requested from Tom late today, so he hasn't had a chance to respond to that, but sections of the five main roads, seven main roads, that feed traffic into and out of the TSAs. So there was no modeling.
Okay. Your destination is on the right.
So the traffic doesn't, I guess that's the problem.
7% efficiency.
So there was no modeling about the impacts of all this new TSA traffic on the rest of Reston. Now, if these impacts are great, which I believe they could be, future generations of Restonians will have to make the difficult decision of whether to live with severe congestion or alter the careful harmony of Reston's land uses in order to build larger roads to reduce that congestion. I think this is inconsistent with the way we speak sincerely of one Reston, and with the fact that we have just one Reston Master Plan for all of Reston, TSA Reston and non-TSA We know that we'll either succeed or fail altogether. TSA Reston and non-TSA Reston, business Reston and residential Reston, there's no other way. So that's why we're concerned about this failure to model the effects of all the traffic in the TSAs, their impact on non-TSA Reston. And when, last year in July, I think it was, when we sat down with Fairfax County DOT to talk about these projections, when we did the base projection based on ITE rates, we were virtually the same, as you remember, Tom. We said that the morning peak hour trips would be 86,000 and some change, about 87,000 new trips in the morning, that's before reductions, and another 80,000 for the peak, evening trips. So that's a lot of trips to accommodate, and I'm concerned about the impact of these. Now, again, we would applaud, we would all applaud, a trip reduction rate to those. What that trip reduction rate is is a matter of difference, but that's a lot of trips for all of Reston to absorb. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I think we have material that we can respond to most of that. To get to the first piece of it, which was the forecasts, I'm actually gonna invite Fred Selvin to come up. The Department of Planning and Zoning actually prepared the land use forecast and the residential office worker forecast, so I want to have Fred kind of talk to you about the methodology that DPC used to prepare the numbers that we put in.
Hi, I'm Fred Selvin of the Department of Planning and Zoning. And if I want to go back, I think you started with three points. One point was that we did not calculate affordable and workforce housing when we estimated the number of units in Reston. We did. Existing count of units includes affordable and workforce housing. We did not, under the PRC zoning, there's a provision where you don't count it when you're calculating density under the PRC zoning regulation, but for planning purposes, we do not exclude affordable housing or workforce housing when we're looking at impacts on roads, schools, or other public facilities. Going forward, projecting, we're projecting the total number of units in Reston. Some of those units will be affordable, some of them will not be affordable. We're not discounting any of those. The one thing that we're not, that is a factor, is whatever bonus density might be attributed to providing some of the affordable units. But again, when we're looking at a long-range, go down to Reston, 2030, 2050, it's hard to, you cannot assume kind of what number of, but bonus density may or may not be exercised, because what we're seeing is, some developments are taking advantage of bonus, others are not. Because quite frankly, most rental projects, when they're proposing a certain number of units in a rental building, they have a set number. And if you say, well, you can get a 20% bonus, they don't want it, for several reasons. One time, sometimes it's because to produce those extra units is too expensive, so they will take it out of their base number. The other factor is, their pool, their management is all set around a certain number, and if you start exceeding that number, again, it's more problematic. That's why when you look at most rental projects, there's a certain set range of units. You don't find a 500 unit building. You'll find something maybe 400, 350, 350. So that's why it's hard to predict how many bonus units you'll see. You can't just say, well, you can avail yourself of a 20% bonus, so everybody's gonna take 20%. That's not what's gonna happen in our area. So I wanted to respond to that assertion.
While you're on the topic, can I ask a couple of questions on that?
Yeah.
So you have taken this into consideration both for TSA as well as the proposed PRC? When you say 2030, 2050, affordable and workforce housing, what do you say?
For Phase Two in the PRC areas, we, in essence, downplanned Reston. We took areas that, under the previous plan, you could get 50 DU per acre, and we planned them for densities closer to what their existing density are, which are around 20 DU per acre. The village centers were the only areas that we left planned where they worked. We had them with a recommendation for up to 50 DU per acre. The residential neighborhoods and clusters, we planned them as close as we could to their existing densities. That's why we have many more categories of residential use in Reston under this plan than under the old plan. The old plan was low, medium, and high. There was a lot of potential in some areas that had been developed at low density to redevelop at higher densities. So in our view, and again, this is as a planner, we saw it as bringing the density of Reston in terms of potential down, not increasing.
I understand that. So my question again is, so I understand the 20 DU for, you know, for the PRC, so you're saying that you took whatever number you took, so all these calculations, these assumptions... assumptions are based on 16, assuming for your, from your perspective?
Yeah.
For PRC and TSA, where were you at?
Yeah, I guess if you wanted to generalize, if you could say, because we did factor an additional residential in the town center, which is part of the TSA, some of that is also PRC. So, some of the increase in going from 13 to 16, most of that is associated with the additional intensity in the transit station areas that happened these on PRC.
So, you think...
Yeah. The next element that you mentioned was the office space factor, and I noted there's a lot of discussion that we've had about this, and I'll start by saying our factor is on gross square feet. We calculate the square footage of the building, we divide it by a factor of 300 to come up with an estimate of the future employees that may be housed in that building. And again, it's a way of estimating the employees or employment coming from a certain amount of square footage. We get the square footage from the comp plan FARs, we translate that into square footage, we divide that square footage by 300 square feet per employee to come up with an employment estimate. Now, some in Reston have used the rentable square feet that people are seeing. So, when you look at office square, office square feet per person, that's typically the square footage that they're allocating, that is, somebody who's leasing office space is allocating to their work. And that does vary, and there are a lot of, now, open floor plans. If you have a closed floor plan versus an open floor plan, there's a very different amount of space allocated per person. In fact, I looked at one building that I saw in Tyson, some new office building, they give you two floor plans. One is closed office, and under that, it's about 386,000, 386 square feet per employee if everybody's in an office. And again, the office space also has conference rooms and other amenities. If it's all open with no, with very, very few closed offices, it can go down to 150 square feet per person. Now, in Reston, some are saying that our assumption of gross should be somewhere down to 150 or 200. That's not likely to happen, but that would be assuming would be, one, every employer is going to have an open floor plan. Every employer is not going to, call it, exercise probably a mix. And if you take those, that Tyson's building that I used as an example, 380 and 150, if you average them, you come out to above 300. And again, and that's not assuming. Typically, on the buildings that I've gone in with open floor plans, they also have added amenities. This Tyson's building that I'm talking about, they have a whole floor, they have an ex accessory, they have conference rooms available for attendants, so that there are things that are coming along with their reduced square footage that, again, is, when you look at gross, and again, the gross is the elevator core, the lobbies, the stairwells, the mechanicals, all of that goes into core space. So, we cannot look at it and say, "Well, it's showing that employers are now allocating 200 square feet per employee, and that we should use 200 square feet." I mean, we are continually monitoring that number, but I can tell you, it's not typically in my mind, it won't go from 300 to 150, it might go from 300 to 250, but even that's going to be de minimis in terms of what we're talking about in terms of employment. So, I think our employment number is accurate. Again, we'll continue to look at it, but when I look at what's happening throughout the market, I think our number is still a reasonable assumption to usual planning purposes. The same argument has been made on residential, where we use, in some instances, we use 1,000, in some instances, we use 1,200. Again, and we assume typically multifamily development. Again, these are for projection purposes, but when you look at the square footage, and somebody will say, "Well, there's an apartment that's being leased at 500 square feet," or "Here's something at 900 square feet." Again, our numbers are gross numbers. If you take the gross size of the building and the number of square feet per unit, in Reston, the number, there are only a few that are around 1,100. Most of them are well above it, and we haven't begun to factor in, to factor in Reston, we're now dealing with townhouses. And what happens when they build townhouses has happened in one portion of Reston, where you now have a hundred townhouses. That area could have had several hundred multifamily units. So, not only has the unit count gone down because a land use decision was made not to maximize the density, not to build the multifamily building that they could have built, when they could have come in to get approval for multifamily buildings, they chose to go to the market and build townhouses. So, instead of several hundred multifamily units, we have 100 townhouses, and those 100 townhouses are big because that's, it's a, it's a luxury market, and those are big units. So, they're not, you know, 1,000 square foot townhouses, well, you know, they're probably 2200 square feet. So, when you look at, again, across all the transit station areas, what's likely to happen? We think our numbers are still good on that, and I haven't seen anything that suggests that we are undercounting the amount of residential units because of the factor that we have. And one additional point, because I'd like to pivot off of it. When you talk about the 80% utilization was the next thing that you challenged. Well, my example of what happens with the townhouse and the multifamily, that's in that, that's what we mean. What we mean is people under the plan can build, I'll call it, a multifamily building, it could be mid-rise, it could have several hundred units, but they're going to make decisions, and some of those decisions are market-driven. So, typically, very, I cannot think of an example, and I've been with the county for 27-plus years, where in a broad area like Reston, everybody has matched out their zoning potential. Reston for years had a 100 FAR from one end of the corridor to the other, and when we looked at the area there between Weely and Hunter Mill Road, we planned it for an FAR of 1.35 because that's typically what was in there. They could have built a 1, they didn't. They didn't because the market didn't support it. The market, to build a 1, they would have had to build a high-rise building with structured parking, and they, the market wasn't there, so they built a four- or five-story building with surface parking. And look, and that part of the equation is always in there, and that's why I think it's reasonable to assume that when you look across a broad corridor, and this corridor is 1,300 plus acres, you're going to get different decisions made at different times and different utilization of the potential of the comp plan. That's why I think it is unreasonable to assume 100% utilization of the recommended density and intensity in the comp plan.
Thanks for those responses, Fred, and it's consistent with our conversation last July. Again, you've seen, I trust, the backup that we had, including reflections on our meeting last July about both the office space and the residential space. I would just say, for those who haven't seen that, the newer residential spaces have gotten decisive, or steadily smaller than they were. But he's, he had things back to 1999, and they were much bigger. It's gotten steadily smaller. And when we talked about, when we talked about office, you honestly, you and your staff said that you continue revising the number allocated office workers. You're using 300, but some actual ratios are as low as 20, 192, 150, plus GSA studies and other local research. So, what we're seeing is we find that there's significant uncertainty, meaning planning is not a crystal ball, and so we're concerned that that could add to the number of office workers per gross square foot.
Can I just correct one point?
Okay.
I didn't mean to say, we haven't modified that per square feet in a long time. What I said was, we continue to monitor it. We continue to look at what's happening and evaluate, is it still a good number to use for planning purposes? We also discuss it with others in the region. And again, there's some jurisdictions that have gone to a lower figure for office, but you have to look at two things. One, the type of offices being developed in your area, and you look at it from the prism of Reston, but you have to look county-wide. There's development going in the 28 corridor that has a different character of office. And quite frankly, I think that they're probably, their allocations are going to be larger because they've got a lot of sophisticated equipment and other things happening in those buildings. Those are the buildings that need high security and are very different from the higher-intensity mixed-use office that you see in Tyson's and Reston. We're looking at unit sizes, but I can tell you, I'm still looking at the high-rise buildings built in Tyson's. When you average it out on a gross, it's still over 1,000, and 1,000 square feet was our assumption for Tyson's. You haven't factored in the condominium market, it hasn't come back, but my guess is, if you look at the new condominium building that was approved in Reston, those units are going to average more than 1,000 square feet. So, again, we use these numbers as assumptions for planning purposes, and we evaluate them continually to see whether or not we still think they're valid going forward. And while, again, I appreciate all the information that's been sent, we look at it, we go through a process of saying, you know, "What does this mean?" But I can tell you, one of the things we're tracking is the square footage of units in terms of gross that's happening. It's humbled harder on the employment side because that means you have to get at how many employees are actually going in a particular building, and there are some state surveys that are out there, but that's a much harder thing to do. It's very easy for me to take the gross square feet of the building, the number of units in that building, and come up with the gross square feet per unit. That's easy. But the gross square feet per employee varies by the tenant, varies by the layout, and quite honestly, what I'm seeing when I talk to people who are going with those floor plans, I'm seeing two things. One, the amenity space goes up in those buildings, and two, they tend to offer their workers a lot more flexibility in terms of being in the office or being out of the office. And if you're talking about space being underestimated trips, the unknown factor in that is, yes, they theoretically can get people in all their workers in to this small space, but at the same time, they're encouraged, as TSA was for a point, that at least two, one to two days a week, people are not in the office. Well, that's a, so...
Right, and it's up to 32% in the region by COGS' last study, that some, you know, 32% of people...
Right.
...telecommute at least once a week. The problem, that is also counterbalanced by a tendency to do office hoteling, so people share desks, so it's hard to see how that shakes up, you know, how that...
And that is actually changing slowly. Companies have begun to pull back, especially if you look at the way Reston is right now. It is beginning, the tech sector is...
Well, I can tell you, the people I know who are working in those types of offices are not the happiest of workers, so I wouldn't...
They're coming back from the office, but I do want to do this, the open plan is just make out for me, like Palo Alto, there's more and more of that being developed here. So, my question to you is, I mean, we are coming at this because you look at it from a risk perspective, you're assuming 300, and I agree that you continue to monitor, but the problem is now we are approving, you know, certain things based upon a 300 assumption. Just to finish my point, right? You go from 300 to 200, you said 250, so let's say it's 200, right? It's a 33% swing potentially, right? And we are lucky enough to have a robust economy, we have Amazon, and all the downstream units coming here, right, businesses. Suddenly, you're hitting the 33% mark, right? So, there is the risk that we need to take into account, so I don't know if you have the data or you have the data in terms of the assumptions that went into a mix, right? I would certainly like to look at some of them. So, that's one question that you can answer.
Yeah, let me, let me respond to that question, right? It seems to be predicated on the assumption that because you can house X number of employees or else you can't build, that that will drive the amount of office space. The office space is driven by the employers and people in the market who are leasing space. So, if the employers and people leasing space are leasing less space, it means less office space will be built. It doesn't mean that a million square feet is going to be built come hell and high water. It means that if you only have people out there who are willing to lease 500,000 square feet, that's going to be the size of the building that it built.
Understood. I mean, if you do an analysis of the last five years, the growth in Reston, that would show that, you know, there's more and more companies moving into this place as opposed to moving away, and you have the Amazon effect, then...
But again, we're talking going up to 2050, we're not talking what's happening with this. And again, some of the assertion is that, that, again, from what I've read, if you use a lower per-person factor for Reston, it means that there'll be 30% more employees here in 2050. That's not, the employment isn't driven by the amount of space, the employment is driven by the economy, and the jobs that are grown in the economy, and Fairfax County shares those jobs more reading. That's what drives it.
I hear you.
And again, if those employers are economizing by buying and leasing less space, then less space will be built.
I don't want to consume all of the, all of the assumptions with this, and we can follow up with you.
I just got a quick question, and we should, we've got to get on to the second question. We're going back to the utilization piece. So, in the unit count and office space or non-residential count that was provided to CDOT for the modeling, so it was 80% utilization based upon the comp plan recommendation for the highest potential...
With the comp plan recommendation taken to its full potential, so it would be what you call an maximum build out, which would be the maximum FAR on every property. What would that, what would that square footage be? Rather than that, that number, we test at 80% of that number.
Including unit counts for those that were specifically residential, or was it all FAR?
Well, yes, it's all FAR-based, so it would be whatever percentage. The same reduction would have taken on the residential, because we kept the mix constant. We came up with what we thought was a reasonable, because most of the corridors mixed use, so there's a certain mix that we assume based on the comp plan, and maximize those, and then what was tested later.
Yeah, I have one last question.
One last question, then I think we need to get on to the second part.
Do you have any historical data for the last five years, or how, what you had planned, what the other years happened in terms of residential as well as office use? Like, for example, you said 300 for office, right? I want to see what the printout in the last five years has, what have people, have they gone down to 100 or 200, or specifically for Reston?
That's one of the things that, that's what monitoring of the plan, and what it might better, when we talked about how we would monitor the plan for Reston, that's one of the things that marks over time. I can tell you that there hasn't been enough office constructed and occupied yet, but that might be.
In the last five years?
In the last five years, this hadn't happened. I can only think of, I don't know, it just hadn't happened. The office market, if anything, you've lost office space in Reston because there's several office buildings that have now... Because, because several office buildings have been taken out.
Constructed, building, there are new office buildings that begin to be being...
And to be, and to be fair, you have to have a certain amount of time after it's fully leased to get a sense of, you'd need, to be able to make assumptions or judgments, you'd need multiple buildings fully leased to be able to pass go in and survey the tenants of that building to get an assessment of how many people do they actually house in their space. And, and again, that's, now, we can give you a better picture on the residential side if you're talking about utilization, but I can tell you, at least from what's happened with Ballerol and Clark Place, that's one where I can tell you that the plan was for a higher intensity than what was developed. Some of the other areas are coming in at the, at the same intensity, but some of the, some of the uses are shifting. So, and RA has been tracking and we've been providing them with data and information on all the projects coming through. So, you'll have a sense of, and again, we can set it up so that you can look at what the area was planned for and kind of what's come in. But, but again, in our view, that's something you monitor, you collect the data, you look at it, but you have to have a certain body of development to occur before you can start making assumptions or judgments based on what's happening.
I would want to say...
Do you want to get a, yeah, we've got a, make sure we have time. Rein them in, right?
Yeah.
Rein them in.
So, your second point had to deal with the analysis. So, after Fred's team provides us the, the hustle, the land use employment and, and the land use, we then put that into the model. And you had some questions about the area that we looked at, whether it was just the TSAs or whether it was broader Reston. So, Frank has two maps here that each of you should pass.
So, Figure 2-1, Figure 2-2. So, I'm not going to get too heavy duty into a lot of the gory details of the travel that we're handling.
You should be in your...
So, not to get too heavy duty into too much of the gory details, but the concept behind this, what we were trying to do is, if you look on Figure 2-1, look at a number of the intersections and roadway links within the TSA. But in order to do that, it also requires us to look at a larger area. So, the concept behind this is, you start at 50,000-foot level. The region has its, its own model. So, the regional model takes into account all the way from like Stafford up to Frederick in Maryland. And that looks at the trips that go on within the region. So, as we zoom into the, what's on Figure 2-2, which is the next level of what we did, as you start to get an understanding of the trips that go on within a smaller area, you take that smaller area and you break it down even further and look at the trips within that smaller area. So, the regional model is done in a program called Cube. Then we went to sort of 50,000 feet, maybe down about 30,000 feet. And that's what you see on Figure 2-2, which is a model in a program called Disoom, which gives you more of a closer set of the region, more of a smaller area, origin, destination setup, so you can get an idea of where people are going and where they're, where they're coming from. And if you see on Figure 2-2 within that larger area, you'll see the orange area, which is represented in Figure 2-1, which is the Reston Network's primary study area. So, once we get an idea of where trips are coming from or going to, or even going through that area, we broke it down to that level, and then we started to look more so at the intersections, because this is the focal area. So, it goes all the way from about 50,000 feet down to intersection-based stuff within the, within the primary Reston area. So, there's a number of different steps and levels that we look at as we go and do this analysis. So, these are the two maps that I want to show you so you can get an idea of the areas that we're looking at.
So, so I think the answer to your question is, yes, we did look at areas beyond just the TSA as part of the model. If I may clarify, I read, I read your report carefully, and I was aware that you, that the Jimbo study area was as far as Arlington County, Cheltenham River, just south of about 50, all the way to Dulles Airport and all that. Do you understand that? That was for data input into the model. What was modeled is only the primary study area. That's what impacts were modeled. You didn't model outside the primary study area, except for sections, and I'm not sure which sections, of the seven, seven roads that detract into and out of the primary study area. So, the only area modeled was the TSA areas. Yes, data came from a much broader regional area, but they, the modeling was done for impacts on the TSA areas and those seven roads. And I'm not sure how far you've studied those seven roads, you know? So, you have Dullesville Road and Fairfax County Parkway, Sunrise Valley, Sunset Hills, Wheelie Reston, and then Centerville Road out at Innovation Center Station. So, I know, I know that you, you modeled, you monitored, studied intersections, traffic on those roads, but I'm not sure how far down, how extensive. But the main point is, yes, everything was studied, but some for input only, some for out, and the only thing for output about impact analysis was the TSA areas.
If you're talking, if you're talking signals, if you're talking specific intersections and signals, the main area is the TSA area. There's, there are some intersections just outside of it. You're talking signals and intersections. But in terms of the results that come out in terms of output, there is output that pertains to the entire area. But we focus signal and intersection-based stuff around this area, because that's, this is the primary where the development is likely to occur.
When I say output, I mean, I mean congestion impact. You don't, you're not studying congestion impact in Arlington County for Dulles, Dulles Airport. You're studying congestion impact only in the TSA area.
As pertains to intersections, yes. As pertains to intersections.
So, anyway... We can answer the question. We did not have the time between your, this morning, to get you the segment lines for each of these, but we can have plenty of time. So, and I think the third area that you wanted to talk about was some of the reductions that we had taken. And you were concerned that we used a different methodology for how to develop those than Arlington used in their paper. But at least that's how it came across the model. No, not how, the claims of reduction, quantity, you have to claim. Right. So, so what I'd like to do is have Jeff talk to you about a study that we did several years ago in terms of how we get at those reductions. And then to show you an updated table of what's actually occurring. So, and not only what, what the study demonstrated, but then how it's actually happening.
Sure. Yeah, I'm really excited to be talking about the, sorry. I'm really excited to be talking about our TDM program, because I think it's been one of our shining success stories as far as a, a new policy as, and how we're implementing it in the development community. So, let me back up a little bit into what Tom had said, some of the background as to how we developed this, and maybe that'll give you some of the comfort, how we came to these results. So, in, I think, 2012, we had approved a, sure, in 2012, we had finished a, concluded a study that looked at various, not only the jurisdictions surrounding us, but nationally, what are the TDM trends, the transportation demand management trends, and what, what sort of reductions are expected for, for developments? This is, this was a very development-specific program. So, we wanted to see specific buildings, specific residential buildings, office buildings. How were people reducing, or what kind of trip reductions could be expected from that? In addition to that, we studied buildings, about 10 or so in Fairfax County, studying how many trips were being generated by those buildings and comparing that to the ITE V2 Traffic Engineers rates, to see what sort of, not only baseline, just, and I'll say a flawed baseline, because without a TDM program, you can just generally expect people to, to get out of their single-occupant vehicles without having somebody target them with a program and say, here's the strategy here, there's a metro outside your door, you can use that, or here's a bus pass, go and use that, or apply money to that strategy. So, the baseline is really the base reduction that would happen naturally and occurs naturally. So, once we had figured out what that baseline was, looked at some of the surrounding jurisdictions at what they were doing, we were able to come up with some pretty competitive reduction rates or percentages that we could take off from the ITE rates, since that is the trip generation method that is most commonly used, and apply those in our proppers and then have developments proper to those reductions. Once they proper to those reductions, we have a variety of different strategies, and this, again, I'll go on a little background. Our, our TDM strategy is, the way the proppers used to be structured is, the developers would proper to a strategy. They would say, I'm going to give you 10 bus passes, or I'm going to run a shuttle that will take my residential compound, the folks that live there, to a metro station. That was not being very successful, because you would have shuttles running all over the place, or there would be money that was generally not well-spent and could be better spent on some other TDM strategies. But because they had locked themselves into a propper that said, I'm going to run a shuttle from A to B, it just wasn't as successful as it, as it could have been. So, instead, what we looked at was, proper to a reduction, and you go operate your program and achieve this trip reduction however you see fit with, you know, either yourself or with a contractor or something, something of that nature. So, with those proppers, it obviously took a few years to start seeing this, the results roll in, but one of the documents that I've laid out here is this, this chart with the green and red on it. Thankfully, there's only a couple boxes of red, which speaks to its success. But it, it talks about the achieved reductions for about 20 or, 20 or so different developments between 2014 and 2017, and we've just started the 2018 reporting. Again, it takes a little time for, not after a development has been properly approved by our board to get into being built and then occupied. So, we're starting to see more and more results, and this list will continue to be populated with more developments that have been approved by our board. But this is across the county. Most of the locations are focused on metro areas, because again, our program, the, the policy, the TDM policy that the county has is very specific to metro areas and a tier. So, as you're closer to a metro station, we're expecting higher percentage reductions. And as you go away from that metro station, you start to see lesser and lesser percentage reductions just through sheer proximity to other alternative notes like, like a metro rail. So, I think what I, what I was going to point out with this document is, at first, when the reports started coming in and showing the, the reductions that we were seeing of, you know, 25 up to, you know, some of them 72, 83%, we had to sort of take a look at and say, well, what's going on here? Why are these numbers so high? We were expecting a, you know, a range of 25 to maybe 50 at most. That 83%, that's a look, that's a development that is right on top of a metro station. And they have such incredible choice for how they get around, that they really are able to be uniquely situated to have a really robust TDM program. And their, their strategies are just, they're amazing. They have a really, really good program as the end, as the end result. And we've seen those results year after year after year, verified that they are achieving these reductions. And so, that's why I say it's been very wildly successful. So, in, in using those TDM reduction percentages, we're able to apply some of those into the analysis that was being talked about before with the Reston Network analysis and, and others, to sort of demonstrate at a, you know, at a trip reduction goal, not even what's being achieved, which is much higher, but at the trip reduction goal, apply those into these analyses and be confident that developers are going to be able to hit these, these high bars. I've been talking with some of the, some of our TDM colleagues in the other jurisdictions locally, and, and they, they also feel this is a very interesting and progressive way of going about TDM. A lot of their programs are focused on taking money into their jurisdiction and applying a county TV, a county or city or whatever the jurisdiction is, TDM program. We do it a little bit differently in saying, developers, you apply the money in the best way possible and achieve the reduction that you're achieving. So, I, I think it's just, it's a different way of going about it, and the, the success is hopefully going to continue to grow from here. There is one instance that we have that piled in the red, was one development that was not able to achieve it until this year. But again, this is something that we work with them year after year. If they're not able to achieve, we have meetings with them, change their TDM strategy, change the programmatic elements that they're working on, say, okay, less bus passes and more of some other strategies. And we have a list and a list of strategies that we can try and apply to them, but we work with them that way. As a fallback, we do have funds that they apply money to the developer, apply money to an incentive fund, to incentivize people with the first construction of that building to get out there and change the way that they, they travel. We have remedy funds, that if they're not meeting their goal, then they have some funds to fall back on that they have provided themselves to remedy the situation. And that would be, that would be the scenario in most of the cases. And then finally, in some instances around the county, we have penalty funds that if we ever get to that point, which we've not gotten to either the remedy or penalty funds, they will, they would have that money to give to the county and our county TDM program, which we have as well, that's not related to proper developments.
I have to break in here because we want to get on to some other stuff, but you are assuming all that Metro is highly successful and that the TDM and the efficiencies and everything, the projections are going to work. Metro is not highly successful. We're pouring billions of tax dollars into it. So, you're talking about regional stuff. We need to focus on Reston and the Reston situation. So, can we go along to one...
So, to that, let me, let me respond to Mr. Tranche's point. Regionally, Metro has had some challenges. But the B station is the one station on the Silverline that has exceeded the ridership projections for Metro. And it is the one station in Fairfax County that the utilization rate of parking right now is at 90-plus percent. So, when you talk about Reston specific, that specific station is doing better than any other station in Fairfax County.
And the system as a whole has lost ridership and is in crisis, and we all know that because we're reading the papers. And I don't know, Tom, not to get into a fight with you, but I don't know how you made your initial projections that you're so happy about. We don't know the methodology for that, but we need to get into...
So, those projections were documented in the original?
Okay.
We can provide...
And I have one question. From looking at your tables, there's Harrison, the Reston Center, and a 47% reduction. That's a reduction off of a gross projection of what the max level would be. When we, when Harrison was built, the number of trips went up, because you have new people to do cars. So, I'd, I'd like to see, you know, something on the absolute, yes, not, not seeing a reduction of 47% of, you know, what large number that was projected by somebody, but the number of increases in use.
Well, we took that into account. When we did the modeling, we took it, we used these numbers here, what their projected trip reductions were, and those were the numbers that went into the model.
You can't have reduction in 2017, we added a whole bunch of trips. You can't have the reduction if you're adding trips.
We assumed that there would be additional trips, but what we didn't assume is that everybody would be taking a trip with a single-occupant vehicle. So, we took a 20%, for example, the Harrison, 20% trip reduction over what otherwise, if everybody drove alone to everywhere.
Okay, with no access.
So, we, we built that into the model. We built that into extra trips, growth in, in the model. And then they're actually achieving 47%. So, we built in more trips than they're actually generating.
I understand. So, at the same time, we have more cousins, we're more people, more, more traffic from the Harrison. There's a reason that we're bringing... It looks like, it looks like we built Harrison and we had 47% fewer trips. We don't.
No, 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 that's off of the projections.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's both the projections. What we also need is to see what the increase, what the real increases are.
But I think what you're saying, and, so, for example, something comes in and it starts out with 50 trips, we're saying 47% of those 50 trips. If it then increases to 100, it's 47% of those 100 trips. I guess, I'm not quite sure...
I think his point is that the Harrison is new units that were built on that site. So, there are added units on that site. And to be honest with you, that's the growth that the COG Plan is, is composing. We're planning future growth. So, yes, with future growth, there'll be more, more jobs, more people living in houses, more people working in all... more people working in all this building, and more trips.
Yeah, so basically, you take hundred as the baseline, you added the number of trips based upon new development, and then discounted, the projection was twenty percent. Now you're saying it's twenty percent based on this.
So, I don't want to go over this further. Do you have a full report on this?
I mean, that's everything that we have reporting right now. But as I said, this will keep filling itself as more development comes on.
I think he's asking for the underlying...
Yeah, underlying data.
But anyway, there are annual reports for each of these developments.
All right, I think we should get on to big number two.
Yes, please.
John, the initial number two. And I'll start this one. This is the planning, funding, and delivery of adequate transportation facilities in the Reston.
I hear you. I hear you all.
All right. All right, so this is the planning, funding, and delivery of adequate transportation facilities in the Reston. And what we sent over to the county staff and the supervisor's office, there are several points, but point C in this, I'll read this so that everybody can hear it because I think that's really the genesis of our concern and what we want to talk about next. Now, so I'll just read this with you. Specifically, we want a genuine implementation plan, not a mere list of projects. The tier one to three projects identified in R N A G and their analysis, including each project's current status, its projected implementation date, its funding, as well as how the various projects will be prioritized to relieve congestion as developments approve. In this connection, we want to note the current funding and planned uses of the Reston Transportation Fund. And I know that we have representatives from the district here, but that's not necessarily fun. Note that R N A G assumes few major traffic impacts from TSA development other than within the TSA's themselves, and that those assumptions need to be tested, which will be part of, I think, our point number three, and that will be kind of a segue. So I guess what we want to ask is, and I can tell you personally from my work at Reston, much of what we hear, and Tom, you and I have talked about this before as well as Fred, is there were projects prioritized out of the network analysis. And yet, we see cranes in the sky and so forth. And other than, from my standpoint, pedestrian projects and the work thus far on the Soapstone Overpass or Connection and the W N O D Bridge, which is primarily pedestrian, we haven't seen a specific plan or even this kind of thumbnail of when might we expect to see intersection improvements, whether they're the lowest hanging fruit or medium hanging fruit. We know about the larger projects more than those smaller projects. And the community, quite frankly, is pining to know what the implementation plan is, and so I'd ask them to address that.
Sure, we'd be happy to. So first of all, on the other document, the larger document that I hinted at, the strategy document, as part of the Reston Network Analysis, we did prioritize the larger improvements. You know, it starts showing up on, these are the roadway improvements. You've got a rail system that hopefully, as you're looking at the cranes building and construction, you see behind there the cranes that are also building a six-billion-dollar rail system that has three stations in Reston. And that's really integral to solving the long-term traffic problems in Reston. So yes, there is development occurring. There's a lot of development that occurred around the Wheelie Station already. But those trips, and if you look at some of the reductions, are largely being covered by the rail system. The additional townhouse development that's being built along Sunrise Valley, those trips largely will be covered by the rail system. So we can't discount the value of the rail system because it's integral to this, even though it's sitting in the middle of the toll road and people don't recognize it every day. But that project is well on track, and it is scheduled to open in 2020. And that's right around the corner. That's essentially two years from now. So that is one of the key pieces that has hold Reston Transportation puzzle. But on the bottom of page three, you show, you see the tiers that we've identified as part of the Reston Network Analysis. Those tiers were identified assuming general development throughout the TSA areas. And so those tiers are not going to, they're not locked in stone. They will change. If all the development comes at the Wheelie Station as opposed to maybe the Hermit Station, then we will make some adjustments to this. We can provide you with, if that's what everybody would like to see, we can provide you with timelines for the first, probably the first year and maybe some of the second year. Because we're working on many of those projects right now. Soapstone and Town Center Underpass were two of the most critical ones. Every time we talk to the community, we talk about additional connections across the toll road. And so that's really where we focus. And we do have a schedule for the Soapstone project in particular, and we're working on the development for Town Center Parkway. So we can provide that to you. But in terms of, we want to see improvements today. If you look on page six, as part of the rail project, the rail project actually has a number of intersections that they are making improvements to that will be done when the rail station opens. And so you see that in addition to the rail system itself and the parking that's associated with that, there are intersection improvements that are included in that. The third bullet up from the bottom there. So Silverline Road improvements at Sunrise Valley and Reston Parkway, so right out here, there's going to be additional improvements to that intersection. Sunrise Valley and Edmund Haley, Sunset Hills, and the Reston Town Center Station, so on the north side. Sunrise Valley Drive and Fairfax County Parkway, Sunrise Valley Drive and Carnegie Road Parkway. So those road improvements will come with the rail project. Some of them are underway so far. Some of them are underway in the next year and a half to make sure that they're completed when the rail system opens. In addition to that, we've taken some of the money from the Reston Service District, Transportation Service District, and we're going to be doing a subsequent improvement at the Fairfax County Parkway and Sunset, Sunrise Valley. So we're going to be adding on to the work that the rail project is doing. So those are improvements that you're going to see in the short term. Are they there today? No, they're not, but they will be when the rail system opens in 2020.
Where is the money coming from?
The money for those intersection improvements is built into the six-billion-dollar rail project. So there's no need for any additional money. It's all built into the project.
So the toll road users are essentially paying?
Well, the rail project has multiple funding sources. The toll road users, yes, are one of the principal funding sources. But there's state money in there, there's federal money in there, there's tax district money in that project as well. So there's multiple sources that are put together. Let me just make sure. So on the bottom paragraph of page four, those improvements around the rest of the stations.
Can we hear you, John?
I'm sorry. So on page four of the strategic plan, Reston Transportation Strategy, it lists a number of projects. Is that the one which is the intersection? It's the next one. I'm sorry, page four. No, no, okay. Well, it's the, okay, it's the next.
Please, please. Page two is right at the bottom.
Third bullet up from the bottom. So all of those are covered by...
Only the third bullet.
What's in the third bullet, all of those intersection improvements are covered by the rail.
Right, okay. So it's only the third bullet that is covered. The rest of them?
From the bottom, it's third from the bottom.
Oh, by 2020.
Yes, by 2020.
And the rest of them?
So the rest of them have multiple funding sources. So the first billion, the first bullet is the rail project itself. And so that is, that's a major improvement. The Reston Metro Access Group had a number of projects that have already been completed. So you see those in the complete area above that. And then there's additional projects that will be built by 2020. So you have additional intersection improvements around Wheelie and around Reston Town Center and the Hermit Station. Those are those missing links, those connections that need to be made so that people can walk to the station. And there are people that can walk if they have decent facilities to be able to walk. There are additional four pedestrian improvements around the Reston area that will be done by 2020. Intersections that we talked about. There are some upgrades to convert Edmund Haley Drive to public streets so that you can access the Reston Town Center Station from the south. In addition to that, there is work that is going on at the station to prepare for future connection across Sunset Hills to connect to the Boston properties. So those are all things that are in the works already. They're already paid for. There's no money that's needed for the...
Tom, one of your statements, I believe, is flawed. And that is that the answer to Reston's transportation problems is metro. How many people in this room take metro to work?
How many of us are retired? I don't know anymore. Drive months, it's too expensive, too flush.
The metro serves a given population, but by no means is it the panacea for Reston. Metro is the reason that we have development here and congestion. We have a trillion fraction of projects built versus those that have been approved. And we are in gridlock. And in two years, we're going to have the ones that are funded by by the six-billion-dollar total expenditure for the Silverline. So basically, it's like twenty-four months away, and we've not even seen the first announcement that this is going to happen. This is, this is good news. This is really good news. But our problem is, we would like to see a comprehensive chart of all of the projects. What is your funding source? When is it going to be actualized? Where is that money coming from? Not a plan for it, a really, this is how we're getting this money. And we would also like to have a big map of the community with all of the LOS levels at intersections because we know, we live here, we know that we're gridlocked with a tiny bit of development built and much more approved and more in the pipeline, and nothing's slowing it down. So we would like a giant map. We would like the LOS levels of service on the key intersections, not just in the TSA, but around the rest of our community because we have changed our lifestyles in 2018 because we can no longer manage our community and get from A to D. We no longer plan for our children to go to religious studies across the adult toll road because we know at the times they currently are missing, get an Altria stool. We can't get from here. So we are in, we're not trying to make your life miserable. We're not horrible people. We are existing people who are impacted by a system that's allowing a whole bunch of stuff to be built and approved, but no concrete plan. We have the plans. We have plans, fabulous plans, but we want to know what is our funding?
Okay, well, you have a lot, you had a lot to say there. So let me try and address some of those. First of all, what we've heard repeatedly is that the community is concerned about the additional growth and how that is going to affect the community as a whole, the roadway network and everything, the transportation network. So the growth is occurring in the TSA's. That's where the growth is occurring. The growth is largely occurring in walking distance to those metro rail stations. So the metro is critical in dealing with the additional units, particularly residential units, but also the additional development because it's going to be walkable. They're not building new units in North Shore. Where they're building new units, they're building at the Wheelie Station. And people are going to walk across the plaza, across the street to get to the metro station. So the people that are renting, and you know, we won't put Maggie on the spot, but the people that are renting at the Comstock Boulevard Building are people that do commute downtown. Maybe they're not in the audience today, but the people that do commute downtown, they're buying in the Boulevard, or they're renting in the Boulevard so they can walk across the plaza, get their Starbucks, and get on the train. So they're not generating any new trips on the network in the peak period because they're on the train. And that's the cross the street from there, that's by design. So the growth in residential, growth in office is occurring right around the jurisdictions, and that's why that rail project is so important to serve that growth. So you talked about funding. So the funding plan for Reston has essentially ten different funding sources. It has federal funds from multiple different programs. It has state funds. It has regional funds from the North Virginia Transportation Authority. And then it's got several types of local funds. So our commercial industrial property taxes, our general obligation bonds, the N B T A money that comes locally. And then there is the specific aspect of Reston, which is the developer contributions to the road fund and then the contributions to the service district. So you put all that together, and you can generate $2.1 billion over forty years. Now, do I know how we're going to generate all the money in 2049 to finish the projects? I would be lying to you if I told you I knew this. But what we've looked at is we've projected out how much money the county can get from each of these sources over that period. And so it may not all occur in 2018, but we're working to achieve. All of these programs are competitive programs. And so the regional, state, and federal are all competitive programs.
We haven't scored, and we haven't gotten any money in any of these, any major money, N B T A. None. So if you can list sources, but we want the chart that is actual. We're on the list...
I can give you, I can give you projections, but that's all they're going to give us projections. Because there is no guarantee here in any of those. But there's reasonable assumption that we can make in terms of how much will we get from each of these sources. So we have money, I think it's a total of about seven million right now for Soapstone, which will get us through design, and it's going to get us to right of way. If you dropped a hundred and seventy million today for me to do Soapstone, I couldn't spend it because I still have to finish the design. I still have to do the right of ways. So we don't need to have a hundred and seventy million for Soapstone in 2018. We're not going to need that money for probably another two or three years until we actually get to construction. So what we're trying to do countywide is to balance the needs with projects when they're ready to go so that we can apply the money and keep the projects moving. That's what we're trying to do. So Soapstone Project Environmental Work is essentially done. Ready to move into design, and then we'll go into right of way after that. The Town Center Underpass, we're in the preliminary engineering mode for that right now. And we've already spent seven million dollars to make sure that the tracks that are being built above that project will be able to allow us to build underneath them without disrupting rail circuits. So we are making some of those decisions. We can do projections for you. We can show you how these projects will lay out. We've done a lot of that already in order to come up with a funding plan in the first place. But in terms of ironclad, it's all going to be things that are going to have to be monitored, just like the developments.
That's the overall plan, but help us, do you want to jump in here?
So when you say that you can only give projections, you've started Soapstone, you called the Town Center. What about the rest of the money? What are you really asking for and what are you going to be for also? For each of... What Tammy is really asking for and what we are going to do also for each of these projects? You have to, now that you've started the engineering design, you have to have, give us start date, give a completion date. That, yes, given, can we match some dollars to that resource? Because obviously you've started it already, right?
Yeah.
You have an end date.
Yes. So. We, we can tell you, we have, in order to do the funding plan, we did lay these projects out, and we did assume that certain projects will be done by 2030, certain projects will be done by 2050. We can tell you that we think green money will be available for this project, and orange money will be for this other project, but those are just projections. And it may end up to be blue and purple money that is actually used to build the project.
Why, why is that concept still there? Because you've already started to work, you're, you've got to be a few years to finish some of those things. Have, as in the process started in terms of agreements, the people that you need to get into negotiations, where are you?
So the funding sources change. So during the last administration, we had a program at the federal level called the Tiger Program, Transportation Investments Generating Economic Recovery. And so for eight years, we had a competitive program on the federal level called the Tiger Program. Prior to that, we had what was more of a formula allocation, so that a certain amount of money, you get the federal money, if you have a population of X, you get a certain number of dollars. The current administration is talking about $2 trillion stimulus. We have some projects that have been worked through the process, the environmental work, as I mentioned, for Soapstone is essentially done. That will be lined up if, if a new infrastructure program is developed at the federal level, it'll be right there, ready to jump in. We're not depending on that, but that's something that we, we didn't even put any dollars for an infrastructure program in the projections. But if one does develop, we have a Soapstone project that will be right there and be very competitive. So what I'm saying to you is, I can tell you in general how we think we'll fund out, but between now and 2050, it's going to change. It's going to change probably annually, based on what happens to, at different levels. You know, five years from ago, the state didn't have what they call the smart scale program. CTV were in the back room, they decided how they were going to allocate money, and they came out with a plan. Now they have a very deliberate process on how they allocate money. And we think the rest of the projects are going to be very competitive.
Okay.
That's why we have 10 different funding sources, so that if we fail with funding source number one, we're going to go to funding source number two. And if we don't succeed there, we're going to go to funding source number three. So we didn't build it with just one redundancy. It has multiple redundancies to be able to ensure that we have the money that we need to build the project.
If we didn't have all of this source, how can we, how come we can't get a stop sign at Pinecrest and Foxmoor? I mean, this is, this is inferment. This is, this is FDOT's plan. And, and you know I've been communicating with you for a while there, every week when there was a clash, asking, can we please get a stop sign or freeway stop? No, there's no money. Well, how if there's no money for a stop sign at a very dangerous one intersection? Are we getting 180 million for this in 2050? So whatever.
So BETA is designing the intersection improvement at Pinecrest and, and Foxmoor. They're in the design process right now. It needs to be, it's traffic signal is what needs to solve that problem.
Can the projection out to get that?
We can't, we can't just put down a traffic signal. We need to build turn lanes as well. So that total project is probably more than a million dollars to build.
And, and we could, we could save people car away experiences by internally putting in a stop sign.
I don't have the authority to do that.
I get that, I get that. We understand these are practical solutions for tiny, teeny weeny problems in an area, and that's not even in Rust. Reston is competing with the rest of Fairfax County for very limited funds. Let's be frank. There isn't money trees raining down on paying for transportation. We're competing like crazy, and we've come up short. And how is our community going to be attractive to new people, new residents, new businesses if already, before hardly anything is built, we're gridlocked? And people are going, oh my God. Well, we're not going to that restaurant that we used to go to because we can't get there from here. Or we'll go at 7:30. I mean, this is the reality of what we're facing now. And I, I honestly, you guys are all fabulous professionals, and I know you don't want us to be in the situation we are, and you're probably annoyed as hell at me, but I will tell you, this is the experience of a Restonian. We cannot even expect that our market for new business and new taxes for the counties is going to remain robust while already we are cringing and going, oh my God. And we have developers walking in here, and they're going to about this and that.
But remember, part of the, that's coming with the development is also grid of streets that they're paying for private, and that's part of the plan as well. So developers are, are going to be building streets that, that don't exist today.
Grid of streets is not solving the problems today.
And that's really.
That's our issue.
You know, if we can, rather than looking all the way up to 2020 or even 2030, we have listed projects that, you know, that you're going to tackle in the next 10 years. And since you say that there are so many different, I've looked at your funding plan, I came to those meetings as well. I, I know of the 1.2 million, I know that number has changed. So you've got to the 1.2 million.
2.1.
2.1 is the overall, but the public share is 1.2, right? Which is the federal source and all that. So can we split that up?
Yes.
For example, Soapstone, right, 170, how is that split? When you say there are 10 sources of funding, where are they really matched up to this guidance?
Yes, we can.
I can see that.
We will do it for it.
Okay, so let's look at the prioritized projects that you have listed.
We will do it.
And let's do that. You know, let's maybe match the schedule, match the funding, right? If this walks through, where do we go?
We will, we will put together for you what we've already done, okay? But again, we've assumed it's blue money. And in, in five years from now, maybe blue money doesn't exist, but red money exists. So we can show you the projection, but what I'm telling you is, the actual type of money that we use to build the project may be vastly different than what the projections are.
The near term should be a little clearer, right? In the next two, three years, it should be, because the appropriations are going to happen in October.
Yes.
Right? So, so that's the visibility that, that will give at least a little bit of confidence that something is going to happen.
So I think we need to get on to the last piece here. And we do some, folks who want to make some comments as well. But, but Tom, I think, you know, that's something that we started with, was this notion of, I like Shudar's idea of the near term plan, and you know, how they're funded, at least constructively right now, recognizing that might change. But I think that's something that a lot of people in the community have asked for. We don't know which intersection improvement is going to be the first one that people are going to see trucks at. I mean, that's kind of, it's the rubber on the ground, rubber on the road kind of thing that people are asking for, and to the extent that we can get that, even though it's only a projection, we get that. But you know, here's the near term, two years, by 2020, these will be done because the station can open 2020 to 2025, and these are the next ones in line. I think that would be really helpful.
In line with that, I think we'd be really helpful if we had some metrics, if we were to look at the metrics of, you know what? Our projected, you know, LOS is going to be over the, until, from here until 2050. Projected today, today, what's awaiting at, at, let's say, average wait for the number of Level B or Level L intersections? And you can see a chart of what it is today, what's projection going up, and then as you implement things going down. And it seems like what, that, that projection is still getting, is going to get worse for a number of years. And I think we all want to know, how many years do we have before this thing starts getting better? Maybe it's all fixed in 2050, but you know, it's, it's a long way off.
So we do not have the ability to do what you're asking. So we did 2030, and we did 2050. We can show you 2030 and 2050, but we don't have the resources to show you 2019, 2020, 2021, and project that out. Now what we, and I think we want to get to monitoring, but, but in monitoring, what we can do is, we can show you how things are, are progressing. So you'll be able to see what the level of service is and whatever intersection we agree that you want to monitor, and we can show you what the actual has been. But in terms of projecting on an annual basis, we don't have, we don't have the tools to do that. And there's two, two ways that we can do that. The regional model that we use is only done for certain years, analysis years. There isn't a regional model for 2024. There's a regional model for 2020, there's a regional model for 2023, but there isn't for each of those individual years. So that's the tool that we would use to provide you with that data. So we can provide you with snapshots, but we can't provide it on a regular basis.
But you know, every five years, the whole.
You just said that. They don't have one model.
So the next one is 2030.
2020, 2030, 2040, 2050.
So the other part that we didn't also talk about is the resources to kind of make that occur. The amount of resource, time, and effort that went into the Reston network analysis is massive. And so as it pertains to doing an analysis, there's a certain number of intersections you can probably look at on an annual basis as pertains to monitoring. But to really go in and try and look at projections on a yearly basis for a number of intersections over the span of 15, 20 years becomes a massive resource.
But you can do the history.
Yes.
Oh yeah, we can do a monitoring as well.
The history of what's happened each year in terms of.
They'll tell me in terms of the sections.
Okay, we need to get on to the last thing here, and this is, so I'll just segue into that. And this third point that we had was an effective mechanism for monitoring, evaluating, and adjusting the comprehensive plan in coordination with the actualized development. And you know, the first word there is monitoring, so we talked a lot about monitoring. I know that TCT, GoMailing, this will spread, you know, they keep tabs on the square footage of residential, office, retail, and so forth, that's been approved, built since 2014. That's an ongoing thing. And I think what we'd like to, I guess what we'd like to see out of, from our standpoint, you know, to be, have that be a regular thing. I know it's probably not quarterly, perhaps, or maybe every six months, something like that.
Going back to my letter to the supervisor in March of 2018, we committed to doing a monitoring program for Reston, some of the ones that are crisis. That data is collected and reported on an annual basis on, on a variety of different topics related to the growth and development and implementation of the conference plan, you know, as tracking growth and development, but also things like transportation improvements or things that are in conflict. We committed to doing that, and we will. Anything more frequent than an annual basis, quite frankly, we cannot do. And what we have been doing, as you mentioned, we've been giving you incremental information on all the projects, and I've seen that it's being recorded regularly through your new letter. So you have a mechanism that is at least giving you information as to what's been approved now. But we will try to do additional information, is actually what's built. And typically, at some point, the characteristics of what's happening depends on what was built. But again, as I mentioned earlier, I can give you things like the number of units on a building that's now open for occupants and add those to the equation. I can give you the number of townhouses that have been built and add that to the equation so you can see 100 new townhouse units been approved and maybe 35 of them have been constructed. We can give you that on a snapshot basis, and I think that will answer a lot of your questions regarding monitoring. Now, who's living in those buildings, and how many people in those know they use a metro, and household size, that's information that, quite frankly, is well beyond us in, in terms of, it won't be meaningful until those units are fully occupied and you have some time after full occupancy. So, so, and that's why when we were talking about the TDM experience, that is relevant in looking at buildings that are near metro and, and the characteristics of those buildings, because again, some of those buildings have been there long enough that they're fully occupied and you get a sense of what's happening. So we've committed to doing that, and we will. But what we have to work through is the timing, and in my letter, I outlined elements of scope. I'd like you all to look at that and see, does that capture kind of what your, our, explain? And again, and these are all tied back to elements of the complaints.
Right, so yeah, I think we want to, we'd like to be involved in that, so I don't know when your first, you agree to do it. So what, the first year that you're going to do that, or what, you know, what timeframe that that will come out for, for the public to review? But I think we would certainly want to be a partner in, in that, to make sure that it is satisfying some of the, you know, acquisitiveness of the Reston, Reston membership. But the, the really important thing about that is, what do we do with those monitoring reports? And going back to our original letter to the supervisor, it's, how do we add statements that the monitoring and evaluation may actually result in a look at the comprehensive plan?
Well, the, the comprehensive plan is periodically reviewed, and there's always an opportunity to review it. There's a periodic cycle, we now call it the specific, it's like specific command amendment process. We just did the North County, which is losing on the middle district. That's an opportunity, I guess the next cycle will probably be in about four years. Reasonably, when you look at a comp plan for implementation, the standard is typically five years. Is, is anything more, anything sooner than that, quite frankly, you haven't had enough time to see how the plan has been implemented and things happen. Tom mentioned, development takes several years to get through the process. So things that you're seeing now in your Reston PMZ in terms of its entitlement, there'll be several years before that building will actually be constructed, and probably a year and a half after it's constructed will it be fully occupied? So you're talking about, so if you say, well, we're going to look at it every two years or three, you're not going to see any differences. But again, our, our planning process allows for reviews to, at least every five years. And in that review, the community can say, this is working, this isn't working, and we think the plan ought to be changed based on what we're seeing.
We're telling you it's not working.
Well, you know, you expect, if it's not working now, it's not under the new plan for Reston. The new development of Reston is just coming in. The plan was adopted in 2015. And again, we're in 2018, so you're seeing buildings constructed, and you're saying it's not working. We don't know if it's working or not, quite frankly. What we can say, what we can say.
Are you translating our woes to the.
What we can say is the plan is being implemented. The plan is being implemented, and the plan that was adopted is for higher intensity, mixed-use development around the metro station and in the town center, and that's happening. The plan's being implemented.
The consequences of the plan show is increased congestion, and the consequences is not just the plan, it's the approval of projects over the last 10 years.
And I suggest some other consequences of the plan are additional housing opportunities for people who want to live closer to the jobs that are in Reston, additional job opportunities, and opportunities for future job growth in Reston. Those, those are all positives that most communities and the Reston community have supported with the Reston plan.
Right, but are we talking about congestion? So the consequences of the, of the building over the last five years has been a significant increase in congestion. And I don't think anybody can deny that. And we're concerned, what's going to happen if you don't level the congestion? And, you know, we're adding a lot more with the new.
So to the monitoring, we will put together a list of intersections that we think should continue to be monitored. We're going to send that to you guys, mark it up, tell us now. We're going to send that to you guys, mark it up, tell us, no, we don't really care about this one, we really want to see these other ones monitored. So that when we get into the monitoring, which we will be shortly, that we're monitoring the intersections that you really want to see. So we'll send it to Larry, and we can distribute it, mark it up, and we can make adjustments. So we're looking at what you want us to look at.
In Fred's letter, this was in response, we wanted to have these statements about the infrastructure capacity, and Fred referenced a phasing plan with infrastructure, which includes transportation as well as schools and other things which we discussed at the meeting. But, you know, I think, you know, the development of this phasing plan, however that may be, I think that's something that we would like to work directly with the county on. And so, you know, however we get that kick started, you know, that's a separate conversation, I think, but specifically from that letter, I think we were encouraged by that and we want to follow up on that.
And the areas that we want to focus on within that, transportation, it's infrastructure, it's a variety of things. So we need to look at all of them together and basically so that we have a core.
Right. In addition to monitoring, and we had this conversation Fred in the last small meeting that we had for, and he mentioned that in the interview last.
I can't hear you, John.
I'm sorry.
We can't hear you.
So in the last meeting, a group meeting that we, the last dialogue we had with Fred Westcamp, Fred was there, and he mentioned that we need to be aware that this kind of planning is done with unavoidable, uncertain, uncertain elements that you can't anticipate. And that led to a conversation of what was done when Tyson's Corner adopted the, its version of the PRC ordinance after, about three or four years after it completed its comprehensive plan. And there is a provision in that, there is a provision in that, not just for monitoring, but for, but the monitoring could lead to adjustments based on what's happening on the ground, adjustments in the comprehensive plan itself. And it wasn't one of these once every five years thing. It was a, it was a, it is as needed based on the monitoring. A recalibration or a mutual adjustment between the plan and what's happening on the ground. And that was, that is in face of the uncertainty that you spoke about and which we understand. Do you remember that conversation?
I remember the conversation, but maybe we had a different understanding of it. In Tyson, we are monitoring, and we did say that we will look at, periodically look at how the plan is being implemented, what's happening, and make adjustments to the plan. And we've suggested that we can do that for Reston. What I also said is that to make some of those evaluations, you have to have a certain amount of development in place. You cannot say, we adopted a plan in Tyson's in 2010, and in 2015, we're going to look at it to see what's happening and make adjustments. That's not long enough. And in fact, the Tyson's plan was adopted in 2010, it's now 2018, and there's been no discussion of looking at it, because quite honestly, even though there have been multiple residential buildings built and several office buildings built, that's nowhere near the planned build-out of Tyson. And from that small sample, you won't get the kind of information that you need to be able to make an adjustment, is the plan working or not? So that's all I'm suggesting is that, yes, we commit to that, and that's good planning, but you have to have a certain amount of development under your plan before you can have any body of data to analyze, to make those adjustments.
Here's the fear. I mean, what brings us to the table is the proposed amendment to the PRC ordinance, which will, in my lay understanding of how this works, the difference between planning policy and zoning ordinance law, the zoning ordinance amendment would create a people guarantee of some sort.
No.
Yep, okay.
It does not, it does not give a guarantee to any specific property owner.
Not any particular property, collectively it does. And that's what fears, that's what frightens us.
If it doesn't, then why are you caring if it's 13 or 16?
Because what we're doing is allowing potentials for some properties in the PRC to redevelop in accordance with the comprehensive plan, which will add additional density to some sites in Reston. That's what it's doing. But once you make that change from 13 to 16, you haven't granted anybody that density.
But you've granted everyone the potential.
The community has an increased potential, yes. The PRC district.
And that is hard to change.
And our facilities can't handle 13.
But we made, I'm sorry, let me finish. We made a change when we adopted the plan for Reston. There were areas in Reston that had FARs that exceeded what you could do in the PDC and PRM districts. And we modified the maximum FARs of PDC and PRM to allow the ability to implement some of those higher FARs that we planned for Reston and other areas of the county. That didn't grant any specific property owner that additional density. It didn't grant anybody any entitlement beyond what they had. What it said is, you now have a zoning tool that you can avail yourself of to implement the comprehensive plan. And that's all we're trying to do with the 13 versus 16 and what's in the PRC is to have, so that people will have a tool to implement some of the recommendations in the adopted comprehensive plan.
I think we need to, we are almost at our time, but I know the next thing on the agenda is to agree, if we can, are there any points of agreement? And I, you know, I'll, I'll actually go around the table here, but certainly the monitoring effort that Fred referenced, I think we all agree with, that we want to be part of, and as soon as that kicks off, that we'd like to be kept abreast of specifically how that is being undertaken, how that monitoring effort is, what's being monitored and so forth. So I started on the little round the table, I know, let anybody chime in on where we think these points of agreement are.
I think from, I look for data from you in terms of the next five years, right? What are the immediate projects? Right, we look for more detail on those kinds of things. I think we can agree on that as a next step from that perspective, and then all sources from, schedule different sources for each of these immediate projects, right? So that's something that we can agree upon, and then, I guess I would say that, you know, we think about what other follow-ups we would need, you know, including your, you know, the TDM market that we used to handle, and we'd love to see that, and it will help us think through this a little bit more, to know, that's fine, that's my comment. John?
Johnny.
Yes. Actually, the three comments of monitoring effort, the agreement on providing a matrix showing projects, the time, general timeframes, and costs, funding sources, very, because there are at least three different accounts that I've recently read, and I'm not sure all of those have a crosswalk between the accounts.
We have all the information, it's just a matter of pulling it together. And I might do a little word work.
Now, on the map, what you, just to clarify, what we've done in Tyson is we actually produced a chart that we agree on what the intersections would be, and then we have a chart that essentially by year tracks the level of service at each of those intersections. It's not a map, but if we agree on, you know, we're going to look at these 15 intersections or how much we agree to, then we can provide you, and it actually shows you progression. I think we've done it now for about six years, so you can see the progressions.
That would be fabulous, Tom, but if we can have a map with intersection one and then the chart with what the result is, so that laypeople can look down and see, this is what our state is, this is our reality, this is what the county is seeing, this is what we're seeing. We need it for community information, and these people are not going to a thousand meetings and getting all of this and know the technical terms, but they can look at a map and they can see, oh, yeah, okay, that's where I have a problem. No, this is getting better because Tom put in a stop line or a stop sign on a bridge or whatever. You see what I'm saying? It's a tool to help you as well as it is to inform our citizens.
So what we'll do, I'll try and interpret what you said, and I'll put together a track, and then bring it back out to you, and you can take a look at it, mark it up, tell us, no, that's not what we wanted, we want this.
Thank you.
Not the last, I think we also agree to congestion. So you'd say you really can't protect this solution, you don't have to monitor it, or as a monitoring development, approvals, et cetera, monitoring the congestion.
That's the intersections that we're coming to.
Well, I mean, isn't there more than just the intersections?
Intersections are where your focal points of your congestion are.
Would it be helpful to you to get anecdotal? Wow, Jeff Westcamp, Hartway is backed up from this spot to Wheelie Avenue down where it crosses way north. Would it be helpful for you to know that in real time?
We actually have, we have that, we get that from Google, we get that from the numbers.
You do, there's one.
That's show us.
You know our page.
We could look on right now, and we can see where all the Google.
Fabulous, thank you, thank you, for sure.
I acknowledge gratefully your promise to also send me specific segments of the Seventh Roads, which are included in the primary study area. And this may be a lot that maybe to be explored later, but continue to be concerned of what I made earlier about traffic impacts outside, in Reston, outside the primary study area. And is there any way to model that? So, I'm not sure, so we'll take a look at that. But what I would suggest is that we, you identify some intersections outside of the TSA areas that you're concerned about, and then we'll monitor, we'll put those in the monitor, so that if you're concerned about.
Barrett Cameron and Seven.
Barrett Cameron and Seven, what's your favorite?
No, but it helps us to know what's.
That's a fair request.
But I think the point is, from the perspective of what the concern is about the development that maybe occurred in this area, you don't want to go so far out that this doesn't register in respect.
No, no, we're concerned about effects on the Reston community outside of TSA.
So in looking at, so in looking at the intersection, is maybe we can talk about how far away you're looking at.
Little problems of Reston.
But I want you to tell us which intersection you want. I hear, I want, if we're going to go out and monitor, I want to do what you are looking for. Any particular area where you're having a problem, let us know. That's a very fair request.
We have, we think.
I mean, Kathy Hutchins, some previous meetings, she's gone, she was commuting at Reston Parkway.
She does.
And she said, you know, hey, she's way, way, she's south of the rest, way south of Reston, you know, five miles south, and she's hitting traffic her whole way at Reston Parkway, seven miles. And is that connected to this? Because she's going to 20, you know, some of this stuff isn't way, the traffic line is, she's heading a mile down there, but does that count as way?
Yeah, so if you're looking at an intersection, the intersection will tell you, showing how far back the queue is going. So, you know, this may be the problem intersection, you may be sitting back here. You know, if we count this intersection, it's not going to tell you that, but if we count this intersection, it'll tell you that.
The other thing, level of service is based on delay. So if it takes five cycles to get through the intersection, then that will get picked up in the level of service, you know? Yeah, so I think at this time, did anybody sign up on that sheet?
Everyone.
I would ask everyone, not everyone.
We all thought you signed the sheet.
Does anybody have a question or comment?
So I saw Kelly's hand go up first.
Tom, I guess, I'm Kelly Weston-Hock, I'm a member of RA's multimodal transportation advisory team. Tom, you and I've had this conversation a couple times about how when the new stations, when Phase Two opens, a lot of what we see as our congestion will be alleviated. That's the hope, and it's on page six in this paper. So my question is twofold. One is how long, what's the monitoring period before you say, yes, that's happened and we're good with it, or no, this isn't working? And if the answer is no, this isn't working as well as we had hoped, how nimble are you in being able to change other things to address what's still a problem in Reston in terms of congestion?
I think what you're asking is how long do we have to wait to see whether or not, whether we're projecting actually occurs? I think you're actually going to see pretty quickly that there's going to be a dramatic change around Wheelie Station. I think that could happen, you know, within the first couple of weeks of opening the new station, because people that are going to Wheelie now are going to realize, hey, Reston Town Center is closer, or Horton is closer. All the shuttles that are coming in and out of Wheelie, they're going to go to Reston Town Center probably, because that's closer to where they work. So I would say, though, you want to reach an equilibrium, so it probably will take a good year just to have everybody sort out their trips and where they want to go and things like that. But after that year, we'll take another look at it. We'll continue to monitor, we're taking data annually on these intersections, so we'll continue to monitor it. If after a year, there's still some problem areas, then we will look at, kind of trying to advance some of the intersection improvements that we identified at the time.
Thank you.
John? So can you? Okay, I'll go first. I've got a couple of questions on the comments. One is, just quickly, this morning, I rode down to the Wheelie Metro, I was taking my child to South Lakes, and the traffic was backed up almost to Lake Ian. That happened yesterday as well. I wanted to know if the trips that you account for account for families with multiple children, because yesterday I was in the car at least five or six times, going to camp, coming back to camp, going to work, dropping this one off at Town Center, going to take them up at Town Center. I just wondered if your trips account for that. Another thing that I wanted to say is I work at Wheelie Metro, and I have an office of a number of people, and not one of them takes the Metro to work, even though some of them live in DC, Tyson's and elsewhere. I've asked them, and they just said they're not interested in taking it, which I think is really interesting. I have lived many years without a car in big cities such as London and New York and Barcelona, and I've always relied on bus and Metro and whatnot. I would be happy to take a bus around Reston, but I don't find that the routes are very user-friendly because they're just too infrequent. The other thing I wanted to just say and reiterate is that point three about monitoring, I think it's a great idea, but I would like to know specifically what would cause staff to want to change. I think that's a key piece, and if you're monitoring, what specifically would trigger you to make any change in your comprehensive plan? The chart, I'd love to see the chart with the timeline specifically laying out, like soaps on Overpass, this is funded by A, B, C, D, this is when it's expected to come, just really specific details about how it's funded, when it's coming. Oh, I have to do one other thing. I found a report about an aged proffer balance, which mentions excess money, that they don't know what to do with it, and it talks about allocating money to road fund areas. And I was wondering if Reston was going to be a recipient of any of that proffer money? And then I wanted to know if there was any consideration about how you accept proffers, if maybe accepting money because it's difficult to chart in progress, if there's any other way to take in proffers? That's it.
I'm not sure I got all of those, but you can correct me or add to it. So in terms of, do we take into account and treat a family that has two people versus a family that has? a family that has five? The regional model assumes that each of us, each household takes ten trips a day. Okay, so it's, that's an average. So one household, you know, my single household takes two trips a day, but a house full of five kids takes twenty trips a day. So you average that all together, it's an average of ten trips a day.
Great.
All right, in terms of transit, you said that transit doesn't go where you want it to go, it doesn't go as frequently.
Yeah, not frequent, yeah.
So this fall, we're going to be out in the community talking about reorienting all the transit service to serve the new metro stations. So I would encourage you to participate in that process. Tell us where you live, where you want to go, how frequently you want to go, so that as we redevelop the plan, it can meet your needs. So I would encourage you and your neighbors and everybody here to participate in that process so that when we end up with the final service plan, it meets people's needs.
Great.
In terms of the H proffer balance, we're going through the proffers right now. Most of this money is generated from proffers in the past where the developer said, I'm not going to build this improvement, but I'll give you, you know, $2,000 or I'll give you $50,000 or $100,000. So it's largely a lot of small dollars and the conditions for which they were proffered have not been met yet. So they may have proffered to give us, I don't know, let's just say they proffered $100,000 for a traffic signal. And either the signal isn't warranted, so we can't build it unless it's actually warranted, or maybe it's warranted, but this traffic signal actually costs $300,000. So we have to find a source of $200,000 to add to their 100 to be able to spend it. So we're going through that right now in a very deliberate process. There are going to be some that we can't spend because it was proffered for a traffic signal in an intersection that doesn't exist anymore. So those we will be looking to reallocate in the general area where they were proffered.
Will Reston be considered for that money if they...
If they were proffers in the Reston area, then yes, they will. I'm not sure I grasp your general proffer question, though.
Oh, I was just wondering, you know, instead of like receiving money, instead of saying, okay, we'll give you $50,000, what if you just said, we'll have you build X?
And that's exactly where we prefer to be today.
Right.
So we want them to build the improvement.
Right.
It's a whole lot more effective getting them to actually build it.
Super.
Can we get on to this? Yeah, just next speaker, hopefully try to keep these crisp and concise. I think John had his hand up in the back earlier.
Tom, quickly, it was troubling to see that the Conferences Plan Road Network did not account for the loss of lane miles on lawyers, so stone, and subway traffic. And when we talked to a member of your staff who was advocating for the elimination of lane miles on those good roads, we specifically asked him, did you take into consideration the Conferences Plan recommendation or were increases in office and residential in the TSA area? And the answer was no. So we've got roads that were reducing lanes on, but the recommendation for that reduction in lanes isn't accounting for what the Conferences Plan is proposing for development along the TSA, point one. Point two, Fred, the reason I thought about the by right development is that within the land use law lawyer community, there is a belief, and this came up during the Reston National Appeal, that a PRC plan is an administrative plan and that the PRC approval will be by right. It will not be a legislative review. Now, there's specific language in the PRC ordinance that gave rise to that analysis and it's in the documentation that's in front of the BCA. This isn't a mystery, it's in front of you. And someone needs to pull out Frank McDermott's brief and go back and look at the flaw he found in the PRC ordinance that exists already, that they are basing an argument that says, whatever the PRC allows can be implemented by right with, and that if the county board denies it, that they'll be able to get that to be approved as by right. In other words, that the PRC plan is equivalent of a subway or a site plan, not equivalent of a zoning matter. And that flaw's there, and I pointed out that flaw to your colleagues. Now, this is the fourth time. That part of the anxiety you're hearing here is that if a PRC plan is not subject to legislative review, then pay by the door. So that's a concern that needs to be addressed and it's, this isn't the first time it's been raised. And that hasn't been addressed is problematic.
So to address the bike lanes question, there are a number of roads that we've looked at in Reston and we are narrowing travel lanes.
No, you're eliminating travel lanes.
There are a few instances where we have eliminated some travel lanes. In most cases though, we're actually just narrowing the lanes. In some cases, marking has been eliminated. And there are some cases where we've gone from a four lane section to a two lane section. Those were done with looking at the projections for those road lanes. And so, one of the things that is really nice about paint is, if you don't get it right, you can redo it.
Over fifteen years, according to your staffer?
Well, typically the funding, the pavement cycle is about fifteen years. But that doesn't mean that if there's a problem tomorrow, we can't go out there and change those paintings.
Only if you get the money, Tom. Without the money, you can't change it.
Changing pavement markings is very inexpensive. It is, we can do a whole road for less than $30,000. It's very inexpensive to go, if there really was a problem, we could go in very quickly and redo the pavement. So the idea with the bike lanes is to provide a different, you know, mode of transportation allows people access that they don't have today. And it's flexible, that it can be changed. If we really screw it up, we can go back in and change it and it's really not going to be a huge issue to change.
Hey, Tom, they have a rule for plastic, that's not paint. How the hell did they get that out of your car? I recommended to one guy in the state, wider world, or your staff, use paint first, that you can change it easy, but that wasn't done.
Well, it can be, it can be changed.
I think I was next.
Yeah, so I'm Bill Penman. I was on the Master Plan Special Task Force. I'm on the PMZ and I volunteered for the community center and, but actually I spent most of my time volunteering for the Sierra Club. And it would be nice if we could exempt Reston from congestion. But the reason we have congestion now is that it's a regional problem. People are, every time they expand Route Seven, Route 66, and build buildings away from a subway, we're going to have more congestion and that's why we're having it. One of the things we were told over and over again by the planners and consultants who spoke to the Master Plan Special Task Force was, the solution was to have walkable, bikeable communities around transit stations. It's been demonstrated around the country. You've got to pack your density there. I think it was maybe a year or two ago, somebody said, I mean, in the Washington area region, I think it was like 90% of the significant new development was occurring in transit stations around the area, not just here, but around the area. And the result of that is going to be, it creates a constituency that will protect the Metro much better than people driving to the subway. That'll keep it going. And by getting people out of their cars, we can reduce congestion and literally reduce it, which has been the experience in our own town. And we can also get some really great things out of it. I mean, let's not lose sight of the fact that this development around the transit stations may bring us a theater. It may bring, it will bring us Reston, it will bring us things that we as Restonians can enjoy the hell out of. Let's fight for managing it to do it, but don't try to kill transit oriented development because that's absolutely what we need. The largest source of CO2 emissions today are from vehicles, transportation. And the one reason I spend so much time on the Sierra Club is for the climate change here as a day on the subway. And we will do a disservice to our children if we don't get people out of their cars as fast as possible anyway we can. Actually, oh, and I will just add, I'm thrilled to hear what you said about TDM because I've often wondered whether he was really coming through. Fred's comment about the 80% projection based on what I've seen on the PMZ committee over the last two or three years, that's kind of like a pretty believable thing, that a lot of the development, to my surprise, comes in below the nominal max. Some people do, but most people are actually coming in below it. So that, and then in any event, whether they ever built the damn stuff, we have no clue. Anyway, so, yeah, and I should ask a question, but I really just want to...
We'll have more than comment.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate that I've been having this dialogue as, as good as possible. Good night.
Thank you.
I think Rob and the other men, I think Paul... I must tell you, I came back from Alexandria this afternoon on the Metro rail and I had never seen anything in life. I couldn't even see planes raining out. I mean, the rain is just incredible, so thanks to Metro Rail for saving the day. Fred, you mentioned 1,300 acres is the area of, is that the TSA areas?
I believe that that's the TSA area. I can, I will double check it, but again...
So the number used in 2011 was at least, and I don't know if that includes Town Center North, because the number I remember from 2010 is 1,700 acres, because that's what Pisces Corner was supposed to be. So let's make sure we go out...
Well, one of the things that we struggle with is, when we did the TSA area, we included the Woodland Park area, which has never been included as a part of Reston.
Woodland is turned...
Woodland Park over at Sunnerville Road. So some of the figures may include that area when we're talking about the TSA area because it is in the Reston TSA. But when we, when people ask the size of Reston, we tend to exclude it because it's never been considered a part of Reston. So some of our maps have a Reston boundary at Monroe Street, but the TSA line goes all the way over to Sunnerville Road.
Well, I can only tell you, two weeks ago, going to a meeting, I got stuck on Bedouin at 5:30 at night. So the problem there is just as bad as it is on Reston Parkway. Six months ago, Tom paged with the Sunnerville Transportation Advisor Committee and I sent a bunch of questions to figure out. And truthfully, Tom, I've never had this process here tonight, they have useless answers to what I was asking. But I had asked you a list of questions, how much funds existed under prior proffers, how much comes from CNI taxes, and so on, so I can resend that to you. But we need to understand, you know, like, I used to work for a developer who was deceased and he was completely ticked off because he's not just paying basic tax rate, whatever it is now, $11, he's paying, paying 4.5% for the Reston community set, he's paying whatever, 12, 13 cents, and he's paying 20 plus cents for the rail district. So, I mean, he was a developer and he was a mile and a half near a station. So, but let's come back to the revenue, the potential for revenue sources. We need to be able to see over time how much funds have been generated from Reston and how much has been already applied to Reston.
Rob, I think we'll get that as part of the analysis that he's going to give us with the specific part of the...
I'll get that because I have more questions. If you want to resend the email, I don't specifically remember that one, I know I've responded to it. Does anyone hear from Sunnerville Transportation Advisor?
Yes, sir. I just had a comment. My name's Steve Weisman. Obviously, a lot of, few useful ideas that come out of this interchange of information that we've got. Overall, I'm very disappointed because my understanding had been that this meeting was provoked by the density proposal, PRC, which proposes to add maybe 20,000 people, but maybe with the affordable and other units, 40,000 people on top of whatever's going on in TSA. And then we're going to address the whole issue of transportation that bears on it. That's part of that issue. It's why the community is upset about the proposal. And for that kind of discussion, I expected people would come in and talk about, okay, what is the problem of congestion in Reston? Why do you distrust us that we can't necessarily accommodate enough transportation with increased growth population that we're projecting? I didn't really hear any real even historical discussion, okay, Reston's been expanding the last five, 10 years or whatever. This is a congestion issue, this is how much you've got, this is how many people are on the road. There's apparently no concrete information yet about those people, even in the apartment buildings next to the metro station. Are they taking no other trips? Why are there so many garages, you know, parking spots for people in these buildings? So that, I didn't get the information, didn't get, okay, what, should we be upset or is the congestion problem pretty well being handled even though we've had this amount of growth, so we can probably handle the rest? And then in terms of capacity to handle the rest of the growth, if there is a problem, words that kind of I remember, you know, that you were saying are, nothing is guaranteed. You know, we can give you these projections, we can tell you about these funding sources, we'll give you charts and maps, but nothing is guaranteed. Well, again, if we actually had figures and facts about existing congestion, existing problems, we have some basis to judge whether, yeah, maybe nothing is guaranteed. Why has this, why hasn't the transportation funding kept up? So it strikes me, and this is just a comment and isn't meant to say anything bad about anybody and in any way discount the usefulness of the interchange and the information that hopefully will be forthcoming. But when I get to the bottom line, how do I stand on the density proposal? I don't, you know, I still feel very uncomfortable with the density proposal. I haven't really gotten the kind of information that would compel me to say, well, you know, they're handling it, or it could be handled in the following way, or likely to be handled, and so forth. So I just wanted to, while appreciating the discussion, except to the point where people were talking more than each other, so we in the back were strained to have the time to hear, we're missing little snippets. But I was impressed by the discussion that I heard, but still, there's this remaining lack of comfort with the results and the things that were not discussed.
So I guess I would just say that we covered the topics tonight that the team asked us to cover. If there were other topics, maybe that's for another day, but we covered the topics we're asked to address. I did want to clarify though, that my comment about nothing is guaranteed doesn't mean that we don't have a plan. What I've heard is, people want to know that you're going to fund Project X and it's going to be done by this date and it's going to be done with a certain kind of money. And while I can make projections, the reality over 50 years, 40 years, is that things are going to change. And so I don't want you to think that there's not a plan, but whatever I produce today is going to be different in the actual...
But I think you were saying, we don't have a guarantee that the money will be available in a timely way, adjusted to growth for all of the projects we've listed.
Now, I would restate that. We have a reasonable expectation that the money that we have put in the funding plan will be available. Whether it's green money or blue money is where we don't know, you know, we don't know that. But given historic trends of how much money the county's been able to raise for transportations, we think there's a reasonable expectation that we can... we think there's a reasonable expectation that we can achieve that $2.1 billion that we have in the funding plan. So I want to be clear about that.
If that's the case, it would be useful, I think, for you to provide people with a documentation of why you think it's a reasonable expectation.
We're hoping to get that information. And just one quick comment, the format of the meeting is really for us to go through like a work plan, just to understand what they have. It is open for the public to come and sit and listen and watch. So this is really an interaction between these two groups. So that's why if it comes across as we are talking with each other, that's a reason why. I just want you to understand that. But John, I think you have a comment on that.
I'll try to be quick. If I was quick, I'd go very rough, pasture time out. Yeah, I still have to clean up the room, so.
Okay. To the density issue, I, what is my understanding, also that that prompted the meeting?
Yep.
As most of you know, I go to a lot of meetings and I observe a lot, it's totally personal observation, not professional, not legal. I think our friends in the development community aren't waiting for you to solve your agreement or disagreement on how, what this should be. My observation is that they're going for different zoning, they're going away from PRC. And that's okay. But my concern is, is that the, to the absolute impact, and I've observed this at PMZ meetings with developers and their plans before, they come in with the tools that they have available to do the studies on transportation that the state wants, and they talk about, I don't want to say academic and theoretical, but they talk about numbers and congestion in book terms, and they don't talk about the actual empirical impact on the ground. And that's what the right side of the table, I think, is bringing to you. And I would submit that you're using the tools that are in your toolbox, and they're good tools, but your job is to aim long. In artillery terms, they're under your gun, okay? You're out there and they're talking about problems that you can't solve with the tools that you have. Almost a political issue. An example taken to absurd conclusion is, is using the tools that you have, you would plan for four-lane roads through our two golf courses and five turning lanes at every major intersection. Now, I said too absurd, so people, I would don't shake your head. But that's, so that's what would happen, and the majority of the community won't know that that's coming, and when that comes, they're going to go acorn, okay? They're just going to go rabid. And you've seen some of that. So you need, you need political help so that you don't resort to your normal solutions and we end up with four-lane roads through golf courses and five-turning lanes. And as your solution to the increased congestion that we're going to get from the density we give, we're up. So that's my challenge to you on both sides. I feel like you're defensive because you're doing what you do for planning and that's good, and you're aggressive because you're getting a bad experience on the ground. And meanwhile, I'll repeat myself in a minute, our friends in the development community aren't waiting for you guys to resolve that. They're looking for solutions that they can do legally and continue on going. And you need to help them do the right thing for us. Thank you.
We've got to get this room cleaned up, actually, so...
You have two more hands up.
Hands up, but we are way over our time.
I'm going to real quick. A second. Yeah, I'd say, Mr. Sweeney to Brad and others, he's saying the problem is, you say we can't do anything to see how this development that is in the pipeline or is on just starting up, how it flushes out. And so you've got this lag of that. And meanwhile, we here in Reston, we're choking from the congestion. And by the time you can take a look at what's in the pipeline coming down, it's going to get worse. So you're always trying to catch up to get on top of a problem that's getting worse and worse. It's like a calculus problem. You never get to, through the solution because you can't. So I would say, what's wrong with the county taking a time out so that you can evaluate the congestion for the stuff that's going up now, for the stuff that's been approved, and for the stuff that's in the pipeline? And then we, you can proceed more rationally and keep Reston. We don't want to trade to Reston where it will lie for the Metro. We don't want to do that. And so we have a problem, and I guess you all not understanding that because you don't live in Reston. So I would say, take a time out so you can do this evaluation for us.
Fred, let's hear it. Will Matt and Ron be the last one, please, real quick?
Yeah, I asked this about before, I asked Mr. Lou, who I think you all know, in land development terms. In one of the parcels under the transit district, the intersection where the development is, is operating at Level C, at Level E or at, and I asked, well, what improvements, when you make the improvements, what is it going to operate after that? Same thing. That is not good engineering. And you've got a lot of intersections here which are operating at that. And that is against the old court of the IT mandate. That's against the federal highway administration recommendations, just there.
The level of service recommendations for this area, the TSA area, are level of service need. That's what's been adopted in the company.
And you agree with that as a professional?
I do for a transit station area, yes.